I would just like to have a moment of silence. A dear friend and someone who has lived in Jogger County for well over 46 years passed away yesterday in an automobile accident in Munson. And they're not sure if it was the accident or she had a heart attack, but she was 67 years old. Her name is Nancy Sanker. She was very active in the community. Actually, she went to Ursula Academy. I remember her sitting in the back and she was in the glee club with me. She was a year old. She was older than me, but she was just really unprecedented that this happened. So we felt really bad to give a moment of silence for Nancy's family. Okay, thank you. The first item is to approve and execute the minutes of the meeting of December 3.
You have an updated agenda?
I do. Forget that one.
No man's getting it.
Sorry. We'll just let that drop. Okay, the first one is execute the resolution 13213, itemizing the financials in Heidi Motel.
We have supplemental appropriation for the Hotel Motel at Size Tax Fund appropriate for the tax distribution, contact increases for the Department of Job and Family Services for their yearly expenses, payment for travel expenditures for the Department of Job and Family Services, and a payment to Dominion East of Ohio Gas for the Department of Water.
Okay. Next motion.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Rhea.
Aye.
Mr. Schoolery.
Aye.
Aye. Motion stands approved. Next item, Department of Aging.
Department of Aging. This is, I'll explain this one. This is simply new forms, updated forms to reflect the new director Jessica Bolt coming on and being on the, for the accounting and the payroll.
Okay. What did you like to read that, those, both of those, right?
The Department on Aging is requesting the board approve and authorize the president of the board to execute the updated accounting forms authorization form. And the Department on Aging is requesting the board approve and authorize the president of the board to execute the updated payroll authorization form.
So move. Second.
Mr. Rhea.
Aye.
Mr. Schoolery.
Aye.
Mr. Sweeney. Aye. Motion stands approved. And then here, sign. Oh, I'm sorry. All right, the next one, the county home, do we have?
Yeah. I did wait to read my, this is just, I had a part-timer and she was still in a probationary period, but she resigned, she's looking for more hours, so, okay?
Go ahead, read those two.
The county home is requesting the board accept the resignation of Rita Cologne, part-time attendant, number 1504-1, to be effective December 14, 2013.
So move. Second.
Mr. Rhea.
Aye.
Mr. Schoolery.
Aye.
Mr. Sweeney.
Aye. Motion stands approved. And the next one, so, to advertise.
Okay. The county home is requesting the board grant permission to advertise for the position of part-time attendant, number 1504-1. This position will remain posted until filled.
So move. Second.
Mr. Rhea.
Aye.
Mr. Schoolery.
Aye.
Mr. Sweeney.
Aye. Motion stands approved. You can't even get to go.
Everybody know.
County engineer.
Morning.
Hi, Joe. Morning, gentlemen. Good job.
We have on here a first and final change order for rehabilitation, New Haven Bridge and New Haven Road there also, and it's in a decrease of $29,000 to the contract. It's a final, good. I'm sure you've driven across that.
I have, actually. Yep, nice.
Little better?
Yep. Gives you a little pause in between.
Yeah, 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 exactly. It came out good. It was CIR that did the work and they've always been great to work with, wonderful company. Just ask me, sign the final change order on that, Joe.
The county engineer's office is requesting the board approve and execute change order number one and final, decreasing the contract with CIR Incorporated for the rehabilitation of the New Haven Road Bridge, BR-130-4.52, and the reconstruction of Section E of New Haven Road, TR-130, in Middlefield Township in amount of $29,313.22.
So move. Second.
Mr. Rhea.
Aye.
Mr. Schoolery.
Aye.
Mr. Sweeney.
Aye. Motion stands approved. And we have a memorandum here from the engineer's office. Want to read that? You want to explain that?
Yeah, well, this one actually, what you have on there first, updated, is memorandum of understanding between the engineer, the auditor, and the board commissioners. Tracy had come up with this idea over a year ago and approached me, trying to consolidate some resources and save the general fund some money by, and to help service the people a little better by taking the tax map department back uptown. The issue why the tax map came down here a couple of years ago was we had a supervisor retire and in order to save money, if they came down here, we didn't have to replace with a supervisor and we could do it from here.
Oh, I see.
But apparently the title companies aren't extremely happy with us not getting uptown and our ability to work with the auditor and the recorder and the GIS up there is a little more efficient. So Tracy wanted to discuss this, spin an ongoing discussion that we've had over the last year and a half or whatever, well, just over a year. And it made a lot of sense. And in light of one of the, the next item that was on there, in that, how do we save money? And that's obviously by a big expense that we have and obviously the commissioners has as personnel and with cost of health insurance and so forth. It's a big number.
Sure.
So Tracy and myself and frankly, I talked about working it out where I would still retain control of the ultimate control of the tax map department, but they would become his employees and he would have the day-to-day and, because the tax map department does have to be under a licensed surveyor.
And that's you.
And that would be me. So I still have the ultimate authority to approve and disprove the work that's coming out of there.
What happened to them?
But they would fall under him and as a result, what that would do is it would reduce the cost of the commissioners on the general fund financing that. And because by statute, the commissioners fund the tax map department, not the engineer, even though they work for the engineer, to kind of remove this whole thing. But so what happens, if it falls under the auditor, what we can do is, first of all, we say we don't have to have another supervisor hired back on. We still retain the same size because he has supervision there. And then as part of this too, I'll have, I'll just take care of it myself and be up there once in a while, or one of my other, Mike Stone's a licensed surveyor, he does get involved with that too.
So you're just going to absorb it, like those who are here and everything?
Right. We'll use, and then also partner with the auditor, because so much of our, of doing a tax map department is to work with them to, to create this and put the parcels in the GIS to, for taxing purposes and so forth. And it's a great tool for people to use, the GIS also.
Oh, gosh.
Ultimately, it really has to do with being able to do the taxes correctly. So what we do is actually function in order, in arm, to help the auditor. So it made sense that if those two groups get together and work together, that we can be more efficient and service the people a little better, lower cost. And it actually, and part of the discussion was, and this will roll into the second MOU here, is that my efficiency at my garage down there in Claridin, while they function and they can service the county and outreach and get to the county, because they're in the center of the county easier, it's hard for us to manage them. So there was quite a bit of management down there. And so I talked to Tracy about, about my engineer staff moving down to the garage.
Right.
Need a little addition on the front.
Right.
And looking at the savings of what I could do through attrition in the supervision that's down there that is absorbed, there's a substantial savings. We projected it over 15 years and even by the cost of the addition down there and so forth, we have roughly, I think it was, you know, $1.7 million savings over 15 years. And then with, we lumped the whole subject of the tax map and the office and everything together, because it was one at one time, but we made two separate MOUs because the auditor is not partying to the engineer's office moving down there. So we made it two separate MOUs, but the projected 15-year cost savings to the general fund is $1.9 million.
Wow.
So it's a win-win all the way around. What it also allows them, my engineering staff.
To be together.
Yeah, we're all down there, so we can function, you know, a lot more efficiently. And what it also does is, you know, if you think about Jogger County, we're the engineer for all the townships too. Chardon being all the way up here north, we do an awful lot of work down in Bainbridge and that my engineering staff has to go down there all the time. We spend, you know, majority of our time out in townships. So it not only makes the organization more efficient, but also the individuals, as they work, their day becomes more efficient, because, you know, we're a lot closer to the work we do within the townships. So that really, in a nutshell, is what these talk about. And, you know, Tracy had, and I hate to speak for him because he's not here, but these conversations all started with him. And David was involved in virtually every one of these discussions.
And we did get the spreadsheets on the savings.
Right.
Because I hadn't very brought up to speed on it, because you folks were, we can't have these meetings.
Right, yeah. Sunshine Act don't allow us.
Yeah, we don't.
Correct.
So, you know, that, we got to get updated on.
Right. And a minor item that was in there.
You got that too, didn't you, Ralph?
A minor item that was in there too, is when the tax map department moved down here, Mr. Phillips offered to, you know, reduce the cost to the general fund by not replacing that supervisor, if you guys built an addition over here for our tax map department, which turned out to be, what, about $60,000?
Turned out a lot more than we thought it would be.
And I said to Tracy when I took over, I said, let's look, don't, you know, hold up for one minute, you know? I don't want you to spend that $60,000 and then we turn around a year later and go, you know what, my operation's so much more efficient down there and then I pack up and leave and you spend the money. So there's one savings right off the top, is, you know, that was just a no brainer.
And then that opens up, your space opens up, space for, like the clerk of courts needs more space, so we need more space.
Exactly. So we're vacating just over 6,000 square feet, which will aid in some of the issues that the county's been looking at and save from you having to build also.
And we're going to realize the county. You're going to realize the savings in personnel costs over a period of time. Will those reductions be by attrition where people are retiring and so on, or there won't be people that are necessarily getting laid off because of the?
No, no, no one's getting laid off.
I just want to make that clear.
And I'll put it this way, what it is, is we have, in particular down at the garage, some of the attrition that I'm looking at, like, because I can be down there all the time. And it does save a lot of my time. I'm down there every day and driving back and forth, it takes time.
A lot of windshield time wasted.
Exactly. And, but what it is, is I have a lot of those supervisors that are within two years of retirement and they do plan on going. And if I don't go down there, I have to replace them.
Correct.
And then, and then you end up having, you know, a 30-year employee, if you will. So, you know, the shot for attrition is right now, actually, and if you look at it, it has a lot to do with, Mr. Phillips came in in the 80s and he, you know, brought people in and changed the organization how he wanted. Well, those, a lot of those people now are hitting 30 years.
I hear you.
So, and then what you're going to see is, as those guys retire, I end up hiring people in and the county will see 30 years from now, maybe they can save money doing something else. But this is actually the best window to do it, is right now. And we did actually just have one leave, one of the supervisors down there leave recently and I'm not going to replace them. So, I mean, the attrition's already started and it's kind of balancing act because, you know, right now, because we're not down there, so both myself and Frank, and I'll send another deputy down there sometime, Andy goes down there quite a bit. But, you know, so we've been able to absorb that, but there's still two or three more that may. And when you project that, the cost of that over 15 years is just tremendous.
Right.
And I believe we can serve the county better, reaction time and so forth by being down in the center of the county.
I mean, it's safe to say that it's a win-win, I think.
Oh, it is, yeah. Nobody's losing their job in this.
Right. Nobody loses their job. We operate more efficiently.
And the other thing, if I can throw out, that in the first year, there's a bump in funding for the auditor, because Joe and his staff are working very hard to digitize a lot of these maps, so we used to be on rolls. Oh, yeah. And so that'll be done this next year and that's further savings down the line. Absolutely. Because now it's all available electronically. Yeah. And that was truly a, you know, it consumed real estate. I mean, all those maps and papers and folders and files all take up square footage and square footage of buildings costs money. And by going digital, you know, on top of that, what it out also, which, you know, isn't in the equation of savings, but there is substantial more savings in that, with that all digital and that all indexed, we have a lot of title companies, surveyors and everything that come to us and take our time and it takes their time. All that stuff, we're starting to put online already and they've reacted great, that they love it. They can, they're doing research, you know, at 11 o'clock at night and they're, you know, at home or whatever and they pull it up and they don't have to wait till we open in the morning, come on and do the research. So as a result of that, so all those paper files and everything don't even have to be transferred back and forth. So it's been, you know, it's really coming around. We have been working on it diligently here this, this last year. It was something I wanted to do anyhow and it's just an added bonus to what we're going through.
Okay, well, I think it sounds like a robust plan. And by saving that kind of money, it makes logical sense.
Thank you.
Would you like to read those? Next two.
The commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and execute the memorandum of understanding among the Jogger County engineer, the Jogger County auditor, and the Jogger County Board of Commissioners regarding Jogger County tax map department. And the Jogger County office is requesting the board approve, the commissioners, wait a minute. Yeah.
Take your time.
Yeah. The commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and execute the memorandum of understanding between the Jogger County engineer and the Jogger County Board of Commissioners regarding the office addition of the engineer.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Rhea.
Aye.
Mr. Schoolery.
Aye.
Mr. Sweeney.
Aye. Motion stands approved.
Thank you. You guys have one minute? I want to embarrass somebody.
Okay.
So you guys have some temporary healthcare that has some other attributes. Sunday night, I happened to go to a concert and she's one of four in a quartet that is just phenomenal.
What kind of quartet is sort of gospel? Really?
Yeah.
I'll speak to you later, Joe.
So I mean, so I won't be available. But, yeah, it was a blessing and thank you.
Well, thank you, Joe.
Her husband's a character.
With the, I wanted to mention to you, with the reorganization.
Yes, yes.
I want to reorganize some of the groups and I'd like you to be ahead of the tack, if you would accept that.
That's true.
I think, you know, I get to change everybody. I'm going to do that.
That'll be good, Jogger County has some more input.
So I'm going to put you and most likely someone else in your, you know, so we will be in those very crucial.
Right.
So I talked about that yesterday. So you want to take, you want to go with what we, I says, no, I don't want to go with what you set up. Oh, we're going to redo it. I said nicely, but we are going to send you a list.
Good.
So I think it would be good for Jogger County to be ahead of that. You know, especially the roads and bridges, it would make a major difference that you're there.
Thank you. I'm going to go hide.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, she can't choose after you right now, so. You're safe for a while.
Okay. The next item is a liquor license hearing that is not being requested in Chester Township by H&amp;K CFM Incorporated doing business convenient food mart located on Chillicothe Road at 12777 in Chestland, CTRFO 3471627. So we don't want a, we don't want a hearing, so you want to make a motion?
So move.
Second.
Hey, Mr. Rhea.
Aye.
Mr. Schoolery.
Aye.
And Mr. Sweeney.
Aye. Okay. The last one, if you would read the last one. The last one is in regard to our permanent annual appropriation resolution. So we're taking the monies that we believe we have available and allocating them accordingly with all the departments after our budget hearings.
And we have a PowerPoint.
We do?
Yeah.
Okay.
So have a seat in the audience.
All right.
Unless you'd like to be blinded by the projector.
Where are we going on this one?
Get to sit.
Yeah, we always go on.
On the high-tech audiovisual system.
You're in a hot seat, kid.
I was supposed to say, see? I figured you were waiting for the principal. What? I thought you were in the hallway waiting for the principal.
Some of it is.
Not that I knew what the answer was.
Based on experience?
I was going to say, no. Heidi, oh my goodness.
How many times were you out in the hall? We're ready to go. Again, do we have popcorn or any?
I don't think the janitor's foot is late for school.
Well, it's the closest thing to a movie with John.
I don't think you hear that one.
Yeah, we'll turn off Life Roy to the presentation. Every year, I give more and more of this to Heidi, because she's really much better at it than me, but I'll kind of do the leadoff, that in the, in the county's, here we go, yeah, county's budget process. We're on a calendar year for fiscal year and the process is we do a tax budget in the middle of the year. So it starts like in April, Heidi sends a letter out and says, we'd like your input as to what you were expecting that to spend for the following calendar year. That comes in, we always give them guidelines. This last year, we told them, you know, no more than 3% increase in your payroll budget, no more than 12% increase in your hospitalization benefits budget. And then individual departments submit, and, you know, one of the things Heidi then immediately looks at is what do people like put in their payroll? If you have a $100,000 payroll budget and you put 105,000, Heidi's going to cut it down to 103. You know, we're not trying to micromanage what people are paid or how many people that another elected official has, but we're trying to put a cap on the overall payroll budget so everybody kind of lives the same way and lives like the taxpayers within a reasonable guideline. So she makes those corrections and then the tax budget is submitted to the commissioners and usually in early, late June, early July, the commissioners adopt the tax budget. Then the budget commission certifies the revenues that are part of that budget. There's an estimate made of how much money is going to be available at the beginning of each year and how much money is going to be received from the various revenue sources. So once that's all done and the budget's in play, the tax budget's been approved, then in September and October, the commissioners have meeting with the individual departments and talk about things that they're requesting. And usually it's talking about things that they may have asked for in the tax budget and were cut back because it wasn't assumed to be there and it wasn't within our guidelines and whatnot. So those discussions are had. Heidi records them all, takes copious notes so that she can, you know, be the memory of this office that when it's time to make the final decisions on the budget, everybody's request will have been recorded and will be subject to final review by the commissioners. Today is the permanent appropriation. This is adopting the permanent budget, but it's really just the core tax budgets, core operations. We do this early in December so that our departments can then, once this has been adopted, they can start putting purchase orders in place to be able to do business at the beginning of January. The real decisions will happen once we know what the carryover is and the commissioners will be looking at all the requests that were made and weren't part of this budget in January. So that's when the real decisions will be made. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Heidi. Make sure the laser, if you want to use it. All right. There we go.
Okay, so as Dave said, the budget commission certifies our resources. This is what we are legally allowed to appropriate every year. And they certified a carryover balance of about 3.5 million. Typically, it's higher than that, but we're being conservative, so we put in a figure of 3.5 million. And revenues in 2014 of just over 25 million, so that gives us about 28.5 million dollars to work with. And that's why there's not going to be a big difference in this permanent appropriations versus the tax budget, because we still only have this amount of resources to work with. Okay, so if you want to look at the breakdown of those resources, this is in the general fund. You can see the sales tax portion is about 43% of our revenues next year, it's just under 11 million. And then the second largest would be the real estate taxes, that's the 2.5 mil that the county general fund receives from real estate taxes. So those two together make up about three quarters of the revenue that we're going to receive next year. We have, that departmental fees is about 8% of the budget. Those are the fees that are charged by all the departments in the county for the services that they provide. So that would be the auditors, the building department, the board of elections, treasures, the recorder's office, all the court fees that come in. The property transfer tax makes up about 3%, that's the fee that's charged when a deed changes type ownership, the auditor's office charges a fee on that. You see up there, kind of brownish-orange slices, the prisoner housing, that's the housing that we receive, the revenue from outside agencies that are housed in our county jail. Mostly it's Kyle, the county, and the federal ICE prisoners, they're the immigration prisoners. The cost allocation is about 2%. That's the fees that we charge to outside departments for services that are provided by departments within the general fund. We charge those back to the departments. That's about $400,000 that we receive. A new slide, that green slide or section is the casino tax revenue that we're now receiving. That's a tax on the profits that casinos make, which goes to the state, 51% of that revenue goes to all the counties in Ohio and then it's further subdivided based on population. So we have that in the, we did not certify it this year because we just weren't sure what those revenues were going to be, but next year we said it's probably going to be right around 750,000. And now the offset to that, as you can see, the undivided local government is consistently shrinking. So if you put those two revenues together, the casino tax that we're now receiving is kind of making up for what they've taken away in the local government. Then 2% in investment income, it's about 450,000 a year. That also has been increasing, obviously because of the interest rate. And then that other, about that 5% is a number of different, it's rental income, it's gas well, revenue income, some smaller amounts, things like that. Okay, so again, the total appropriation for all the funds that are, for which the commissioners are the appropriating authorities, about 106.8 million is what, 150 different funds found in this appropriations budget, but we tend to focus on the general fund because that's the largest operating fund of the county and that's about 28.5 million. And as Dave alluded to, we had about 29.6 million in requests from the departments. So that's, there's about a 1.19 million difference and that's what the commissioners will be looking at in the future, once we know what that carryover is and what those items will be to be funded. So it's just a breakdown by the departments of what they requested that's not funded in this permanent appropriations. And then the percentage increase over their operating budget. So the auditor, ADP, had some personnel requests. Board of elections, that's mainly a capital request for some, I think, computer replacements and also some e-poll books that they feel might be mandated by the state. Building, that is a vehicle replacement. Clerk of courts, also that is some salary parity that she Clerk of Courts, also that is some salary parity that she wanted to do. Common Please Court, that's kind of a large number you see, but about three quarters of that is some, a program that's now being mandated by the state that they will need to fund and provide personnel for, its cognitive behavioral therapy program that they, up to this point, have done without, but now the state is saying you're gonna have to do that. Juvenile probate, some of that is for, I think...
Little bit over half of that is what we had projected when we did the heroin initiative.
Right. A lot of these have to do with...
Yeah, so, yeah, and, you know, yeah, go ahead. That's, that's a big part of that, but not all.
We did that heroin initiative in August. I think we gave supplementals to some of the departments, and so this is a continuation of those programs. They came back and requested these types of things that they wanna do. I think in the juvenile courts, it's the FLIP program that they're using. Part of that is also the good deeds program that was instituted by them. Munich Court, that is, again, for the heroin program. They wanted a pretrial release officer. Prosecutor also, it's staff for felony drug prosecutor and a part-time criminal investigator. Public Defender's Office, that amount is, he was requesting, again, some salary parity with some of the other departments. Now, part of that is reimbursable by the state, so about forty percent, I think, there. The Recorder had requested additional part-time clerk. And then the Sheriff, the majority of that is also the three deputies that they hired as part of the heroin initiative. And then there is a small, there's about sixty thousand dollars for vehicles that they would like to purchase, replacement vehicles. So, that makes up the one point one in difference between what we funded and what's... So, this just graph just shows you how those operating expenses are split up between the departments. Obviously, that public safety is the biggest one, and that is the Sheriff's Department, but also the Coroner and the Building Department are part of that. Legislative and executive portion is the next largest, and that is the general government part, which is the auditors, commissioners, prosecutor's office, the recorder, the treasurer, the ADP department, maintenance planning, and also the Board of Elections in our archives. And then the judicial, that sixteen percent is all the Court's office, plus the clerk of courts, and also the public defender's office. Public Works is what Joe was just discussing, the portion of the general fund that's for the engineers, tax map office. Health is that state mandated tenth of a mil that we have to appropriate for the children or the Bureau of Mental Health. We're required to appropriate that for, and it's about three hundred thousand dollars. Human Services is the Veterans Commission. Conservation and Recreation is the funding that we provide for the Soil and Water Conservation District and also the OSU Extension Office. And then the miscellaneous part is some expenses that we have. Most of that is probably our vehicle and liability and property insurance, and also the postage. There's some other things in there, the property taxes that the county pays on taxable property. I think our allocation for the Corps of Appeals, some other miscellaneous items in there. But that's how it's broken down in the expenses in the general fund. And then the last part is the debt. There were extra funds were transferred to the Debt Retirement Fund in order to make a one point five million dollar payment in 2013, and that happened in August. Paid down one point five million on the debt. Seven hundred and fifty thousand went to the Safety Center, and seven hundred and fifty thousand went to the eight hundred, the radio upgrade. So, currently, the debt left is seven hundred and fifty thousand on the Safety Center and about three point two five million on the eight hundred upgrade. And the goal is to have that portion, that seven hundred and fifty that's left on the Safety Center paid off in 2014, and then we continue to just make payments on the three point two five million on the rest of the debt. But that was the balance of it.
The end.
Yeah. Very simple.
Yeah. Wow.
Did I miss something? Was there something you did for the Park Districts?
Park is separate.
Yeah, we don't do...
We don't do, they're not the general fund.
The three agencies always say that are county agencies that aren't in the commissioners' funds, the Park District, the Health District, Library System. County agencies, but most of the old ones that have county in them are in this budget.
That was a nice presentation.
Yeah, nice. Simple.
No popcorn? Make them no.
So, you're over your quota, Commissioner? Pretty close.
I guess you could read that then, Tim.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and execute Resolution Number thirteen dash two one two, Permanent Annual Appropriation Resolution in accordance with ORC Suctions five seven zero point three eight and five seven zero five point four zero.
So, move. Second?
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Schooler?
Aye.
And Commissioner Smee?
Aye. Motion stands approved. We have men...
Tom, is it too late to speak up on the bike trail that we had in the last meeting? Or can I get...
You can always say something if you'd like.
Sure.
Okay. I'm the quiet one that usually hides behind the camera there. I usually don't speak up unless I have something really good to say.
Tom, could you speak up a little bit? Or could we shut this thing off?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You know what? It's cool, it'll shut down by itself.
Okay. We don't wanna burn the ball by...
No. I don't wanna burn it in school. Instead of the waste basket.
Yeah, that's right. We'll just...
Usually, I don't say anything unless I know the answer is before I ask the question. And, 'cause I've been burned too many times by saying something and not being right in it, I don't know what with my research. But, did some research the other night and found out that the park system with their connector into the bike trail is not planning and any action at all to continue that bike trail. They don't even know, they don't even have anything on their books of this plan. I talked to one of the park commissioners, and we have a meeting coming up next week with the Parks Commission. I'm gonna ask it to the full board and find out what their plans are for the bike trail. As far as I can tell right now, it's a, it's a trail to nowhere. And it's gonna come into Chardon, it's gonna end in Chardon and never ever connect through unless there's something, something's gonna happen with the parks board. And at this time, I'm hearing, no, there is not. There is nothing planned now or in the future. The park does own the right-of-way that comes out of Chardon and goes southeast there, but there's no plans for ever developing that.
Going, you mean going north?
Going, going, well, across forty-four, heading, heading east.
That's the, I believe, that's the second half of what Chardon is proposing, is that...
No, I think it, don't you mean going... Yeah.
Now, the part, the second half that Chardon is proposing is from, well, the first half that goes through here to...
Water Street.
Water Street.
Okay, so one street...
From Arby's.
To the park.
Over to, yeah.
To the forty-four.
Yeah, that would be, that would not be the Park Districts.
That's not the Park District, but beyond that, there's nothing.
Well, on forty-four, there is.
Nothing planned.
But it's already there. We're talking about the Maple Highland Trail?
The right-of-way exists, but they don't plan on ever developing it.
Are you talking about going east?
Yeah.
It's already built. Unless you mean going north. The one going east is already there. Maybe you mean the one...
Oh, we got the Middlefield. The trail's already there.
Oh, the Middlefield, are you talking about the one that would connect over to Burton, Middlefield through... Yeah, we're, that's, that's not part of... You're right, that isn't connected, but that doesn't connect with Chardon's doing. I know what you're saying. You're right. You are right.
Yeah, I followed it on the map, all the way through, from the auditor's map.
There is one?
The GIS.
They wanna take the one from Middlefield, and they wanna bring that, I know what you're talking about, and it would go through Grandview, right?
It's already in the process of being built.
I don't, I don't think they have the money. I don't think they...
Because if you...
But that was gonna go down, and then that was gonna connect into the one in Chardon. Is that what you're talking about?
Well, if I had a map here, I could show you where it was.
Could you?
You're saying the extension that isn't planned is down around Middlefield, because the trail is there from forty-four all the way that round down the six oh eight by Grand. It's there.
That's already completed?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That's all there.
Yeah, that's a huge, that, how long is that?
Twelve miles?
Oh, yes. I mean, that follows railroad line, you know, they took over that railroad bridge that goes over...
I think he means the one from...
Yeah, I mean, beyond that, off of that...
That's what I think that's what Tom's talking about.
It's the one that's going from like the road to nowhere, so to speak, and then it goes over to Grandview. They're already in the process of working on that.
They are? But it's, but I don't think that that was...
Saying gravel, it's not gonna change.
And who's undertaking that?
That's the Park District.
That is the Park District. Okay. One more, guys. Do we have anything else? All right. Coming up, we'll be down at Portage, oh, it's two o'clock. I thought it was one thirty. And the partners is at four. And then there's a CIC Friday in the afternoon at twelve at St. Dennis. And then we'll be down at the CCO Winter Conference in Columbus. And then our meeting for the tenth has been canceled, and so has the Planning Commission been canceled. And then the twelfth, the regular session. The sixteenth, family person two. The seventeenth, the advisory meeting at nine forty-five in Chambers. And the seventeenth, our regular session, and the nineteenth. And that takes us halfway to, through December.
Why is the planning commission canceled so much?
They used to have, you know, Ralph was asking why it's planning commissions canceled a lot. They used to have an awful lot of developments going in, but right now, the one development that seems to be giving the planning commission some operations is the Canyon Lakes and that Bay Bridge. That's many, many phases. And then when they were doing the Judson operation, that had, there was a lot going on. And then we had many developments, like there was some in Munson for a while, but lately, I mean, it's starting to go up a little more than it was, but not like it was in the six and seven. Remember, we had the real boom of, but it is going up more than down, but it did go down considerably, yeah.
You forgot off the Noakamie.
Excuse me?
You're forgetting the Noakamie.
Oh, you're right. There, thank you.
Thirteenth.
The thirteenth.
I know it's not an important organization.
Oh, it's important. We just always forget to put it in. Twelve thirteen.
Forgot it.
It was a Friday, thirteen.
Heard this morning about the seventeenth with the Solid Ways.
Oh, right.